We are here in a call to order the Hangon School Committee meeting of April 26. I'll read my remote language because we are having, we have some remote participants tonight, including Ms. Grantini, Miss Tanyor Muthle. This meeting is being held in person and remotely as an alternate because of access of the two and chapter two of the Acts 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain divisions of open meeting. You are hereby advised, this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hangon in accordance with open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with passed under law, chapter thirty, page section twenty. The chair may inform other participants of that recording. Our media is not here. Sherry, I think you're recording on Zoom. Yeah. And anybody else?
Nobody.
No, I'm here for you and none of our many guests. All right, this is a relatively, I think it'll be a relatively short meeting. We'd actually scheduled this meeting for tonight in the worst case scenario event, but the override had failed a town meeting on Monday night. Similarly, have a meeting scheduled Monday in the event that override fails on Saturday. We are incredibly grateful that the override was successful at town meeting. But rather than cancel this meeting, we wanted to just keep it just here, address any lingering questions that folks in the public might have or any committee members might have. And to remind the public and this committee of the devastating cuts that are to come when the override fails on Saturday. So there's no action that we're going to be taking this evening. Dr. Adams and Ayesha are going to just provide us with a high level overview of the, again, devastating cuts that would be made if that override fails on Saturday. The overview we'll give us tonight will just help us prepare for a potential eventuality that on Monday we would need to discuss and act on the superintendent's formal budget cut recommendations. I'm repeating this word, but if the override does not pass on Saturday. So I think that's, I just wanted to set the table that that's what we'll just do tonight. First on the agenda, we do have questions and comments. If they're related to the budget, we'll take those as we're talking about it. But is there anybody in the room or online that has anything for public comment? So anything not on the agenda, the only thing on the agenda is that. All right, seeing none, Sherry? No answer? Okay, we will turn over to Dr. Adams and Ayesha. So we wanted, we are just going to present the slide again. I think that in, oops, what slide did I miss? Not this one, we're not there yet. I'm going to go to the next one. Yeah, we just have one slide that provides that general overview. I think in the last couple of months, going up to the budget, there were different levels of cuts and sort of some, you know, we had different numbers. And so finally settled upon that 3.9, approximately 3.9 total amount that needed to be cut. At the elementary level, that would represent 20 positions. And remember, that's across the four schools. Similar cuts across, our hope is that the cuts in need would be similar across the four schools. The middle school, 10.2 FTEs. The high school, 9.1 FTEs. Oh, sorry, my number is a different here, sorry. The high school, 11.1 FTEs. Athletics, remember, was, the proposal was to eliminate freshman sports, which would allow for that reduction of 266,000. Central office, the equivalent of four FTEs. Curriculum and professional development would also see a decrease. The curriculum line is mostly textbooks and materials that are purchased at the district wide level, as well as schools. Technology, a reduction in some of the hardware and software that's used by the schools. And then in order to generate revenue, a transportation fee of $250 for grades seven and twelve. Thank you. It's, start seeing it again up there, right? I mean, $4 million cut from this school budget that's been chronically underfunded for over a decade is. I think what I would say, just to my fellow committee members, it's been a long time in the making and we all ran hard for these seats and I'd like to see us all run just as hard, if not harder, to get this thing passed on Saturday. I think this is arguably the most important campaign. It's not for us individually, right? But it's for the students and the staff and we gotta bring this in home. Because I do not want to sit here on Monday and do that.
Nobody runs the school committees thinking that the school's worse.
Exactly, exactly. I think there, and there's a lot of misinformation out there that's coming fast and furious and some sort of twisting of facts and just for anyone who's on is hearing some of this stuff, you know, there's some, you know, oh, the schools have added these many positions, but that's not including part-time positions, it's not including COVID positions of additional custodians or pest strippers that we needed during the pandemic. You know, remember we were in hybrid working situation where kids were in half days, half or half a week. So that did, so people are sort of conflating a lot of facts.
And there's a lot of disinformation. I think a lot of people are spreading around that there were 30 new hires this year, which is actually completely wrong.
Right.
So those were new teachers replacing retirees and.
Leave and resignations, right. They were not just 30 new positions.
Yeah.
Common to have, you have a group new coming in.
Yes.
Those were not new hires or new money things. They were not, they were not new positions.
Yes, they were not 30 new positions.
No, that was just a wave of retirements.
Yeah, yeah.
Or people are replaced.
Or replaced. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I really appreciated Dr. Gallo's remarks on Monday and talking about how, you know, it was, we've been underfunded since the override opened East School. Like by half as much and it's taken 10 years to kind of claw our way back. So this would just knock us back, which is really just bad.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it was like that, that back there in the, somewhere that was comparing the number of employees that we have from here in the area. Well, that's the number of everybody in the public schools. It's not positions, it's employees. Someone's working part-time, one job. During COVID, they could have been doing just one route for bus. It could have just been someone doing like a part-time job.
Right, job shares.
Job shares. It doesn't equate to the number of positions in the work that I'm part.
Right, that is very true. I think I hear a lot about the 32 positions, like, oh, you know, why it was permanent position, they were supposed to be just for COVID. And I tried to explain that in my remarks that they were not just COVID recovery, they were recovering from, the first time we can get all the funds we needed when East School opened and that was, that set us back. And also the fact that, like, we can do the math, right? We're talking about cutting 46 positions, we added 32 and that's not, that's still more than what we added. So that's still definitely going backwards. And it's those, many of those 32 positions are still going to have to stay because they're still very much needed. So I mean, it's a real, real step backward.
And I mean, I think looking at the data that Katie had presented earlier with Irene, like, that's a great tool. But we, I mean, you had mentioned vendor, said, you know, maybe more progress in a lot of public districts because they've had the people to intervene and actually provide the intervention or mediation. I mean, that's, that's huge. There's, there's data to support this. It's not like we think, you know.
And we have the data because of the people.
Yes, well.
It's related, right?
And I certainly appreciate all the parents that came out to town meeting on Monday.
Yes.
That's important to call the calls.
Yes, yeah, one more, one more go. And a big cautionary tale. I don't know if everyone has seen this, but in 1991, an override passed a town meeting and then ultimately failed by two votes. Literally every vote really does matter. It lost by two votes at the ballot.
One person changes their mind, that's a tie. One person changes their mind, that's a tie.
Exactly. And, or one couple decides, meh, let's not stay home. It's raining, I don't want to go to the polls. And now you're just lost.
I just clarified one thing that I said, my parents, and then everybody, they showed up. Grandparents, the citizens, everyone who showed up.
Yes.
The students.
Yeah, I mean, drops. I sent, I sent Mary Andrews a little email today telling her that the English department had much to be proud of by the way, students all stood up and now eloquently and passionately, you spoke how well crafted and well written your statements were. It was very, very admirable.
They had their reach for significance, that's the thing.
One of them had their reach for significance.
Yeah. And helping Andy, who he was speaking on that.
You have a proud mom in the audience.
Yeah.
The main thing, particularly, I mean, not only how well spoken and eloquent, but also just having the nerve to stand up there and do it. So I mean, I think my voice was shaking more than the students' voices were. And yours, I mean, he had to get permission to speak. So I mean, that was really, really impactful.
I've been bragging all week.
Tony did say, when I asked him up front, I'm like, are you sure you want to get up in front of all these people? And he's like, looked around and he's like, yeah, I don't mind public speaking.
Yeah, it was great, it really was. And, and it worked. I mean, that one woman stood up and said she had come to the meeting to vote against it. And she's like, in hearing all this, I decided to change my vote. Her, you know, I was looking, her dad had been a custodian at the high school for many years. And I think she'd said sort of Dr. Gallo's remarks and then the student remarks really entertained her mind.
What would my dad have wanted?
Yeah, she said, that's what my dad would have wanted. I was really moving, that was remarkable. So we just gotta keep that momentum going through Saturday. I'm just working on.
And frankly, it needs to be said that with the mail that went out, the stated policy, people were fighting against the override, they were fighting for less money for the schools, is to go to the polls and vote on Saturday. Their stated strategy was not town meeting, so I don't want to even think it flew through town meeting, therefore there's no opposition. We know there's serious opposition.
Yes, they are, yes. And then, and you're right, and that was, that was their stated strategy, to go to the polls.
Just reading their words. Are we, are we allowed to talk about a collective get out the vote strategy? Like, is that, or is that not, I don't understand. Because I mean, I think each of us individually, you know, have things that we've been doing and can do.
Yeah.
I just, I don't want to, I think it could be more powerful, but if it's like against the rules, we shouldn't do that.
Maybe it's not on the agenda, but.
That stated position here, or stated reason for being here is to improve the Hangon Public Schools. And I think we're all in agreement that this is what we need to improve the hangon public schools.
Yes. So. And a big fact is we all voted in support of.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know.
No, I hear, I think it's a good question. Is there, right, so we're all in agreement, we need this override to happen today. Because you don't want to be late for the point too much, but I know there are folks online. Is there anyone on the Zoom that has a question or needs anything clarified? Or any questions, last minute lingering questions about the budget?
Will they be able to ask questions after the presentation?
That was it.
That was the presentation. That's the shortest PowerPoint I've ever seen.
Reminder of what is being proposed and then on, God forbid, we have to be here on Monday.
Yeah.
Like obviously that's when we think deliberation and discussion. So sorry, Sherry, is there anyone online? No, I think that there was clear, I think there's, is a lot of this communication and misinformation that we heard with the process, Monday and Tuesday. So I think it's important to know, it's been a very thoughtful, transparent process. There's been, as the advisory committee said, they had 16 minutes, 16 meetings to discuss the budget. I, I think we might, we're a little under 16, but we might rival them with just as many meetings that where there was a very thoughtful process to discuss each piece. And a reminder that our budget also included, there was some thoughtfulness around reductions that we made where we could, where we needed additional staff. We also made some reallocations. There was some thoughtfulness done and we really worked hard to, to really think about what are the current needs and how do we maintain the level of services that we're offering. Each, each single one of these individuals is extremely important, doing important work in service of our young people, in service of families. And each represents a loss to a school community, to classroom and to students and families. And so that's why, you know, this vote on Saturday is extremely important to our school community. I think that is an excellent point because there is a lot of conversation about the number of positions. And they're not positions, they're people's jobs and livelihoods and vocations. And they're here to impact students and to promote student achievement and meet the student needs, which are the requirements of a public school, which is required to be funded by the taxpayers. That is literally how the whole thing works. And it is inconvenient timing. I don't disagree, right? I mean, all things happening at once, but those decisions that were made, and I don't disagree with the decisions, people made the decisions that they made, when they, with the information they had at the time they made them. And I hope that people recognize that we have information now and we're making decisions that we think are in the best interest. No, not saying that we know are in the best interest of our students and our staff. And I think that the fact that all three boards were unanimous in their support of this, I mean, that's not an easy feat, right? Particularly about something like an override, right? And I mean, we disagree frequently. And we did throughout this whole process, but we got, we all came to the same conclusion. And I think that was one thing, you know, today there was some stuff out there about how, you know, that there wasn't enough information. And I thought, oh my goodness, it's been so transparent, like there couldn't even have been more information put out there, just all around. So anyway. I was grateful to the advisory, I think it was Mr. Danus who said, you know, reference the staffing audit, the MTSS data that we've shared that to really show the impact of the work that's being done. And so I was grateful, not, it wasn't just the budget information, but on collection of information that's been shared and thoughtfulness in making decisions. So I was grateful that there was recognition. I think you and your remarks also recognized and knew how it works. But I think there was recognition across all three of them.
You made a good point, Michelle, though. You were talking about how, you know, the advisory committee in this board asked a lot of these really tough questions during the process. And the other thing too is I don't blame anyone who wasn't digging in this process from the beginning and, you know, didn't attend all the meetings, but that's, that's what they always told us to do.
Right.
But, but if anyone does wonder, it is coming into us like, hey, wait a minute, like what's, what's the truth here? It's all on mine. It's like, and the town has a great website, the school department has one. You go back and watch it, I think they were all, all of those meetings were recorded, at least the AdCom ones and our Monday night ones. So you can kind of go back and do that. And I just encourage anyone who is getting information from, I don't know, social media or like other, other places, to go back to the primary source and get like the redbacks and, you know, and look at that.
And obviously, if you have a specific question, email us or, you know, we're happy to continue to answer questions all week long.
There, yeah, I mean, there's not a lot of people on here, but you know, the folks who are, talk to your, you can talk to your neighbors, tell them, you know, if they have any questions to reach out. I don't believe it because, I mean, it's a very short meeting, but I'll, you know what, I'm just going to see, I want last thought comment about the process. Yeah, I'm going to add, everybody. Sorry.
No.
It's been a long, it's.
Yeah.
People in the Hangon and subcommittee have been doing this since last summer, right? And then the rest of us have been doing this every day.
Yeah, and I, I know for myself, I asked a lot of, a lot of questions throughout and, you know, I'm very comfortable with that this is, this is more than very comfortable. Like to me, at this point now, we're at a decision of, we're either going to have, you know, 40, what we have today, or we're going to have 46 less teachers, less athletics, less technology, higher fees. I mean, is, at this, it's devastating to the schools. I mean, it just is. And I can under, it is fair for people to certainly vote no because they're concerned about taxes. I understand, I understand that. I think if someone's voting no because they don't believe the schools will be impacted like that, I fundamentally disagree with that.
Yeah.
Now, if you don't believe that the schools are important, or, and I know it's not just schools, but that's our purview, they're, they're not that important. And then, you know, I just, for me, this, that's, it would be devastating if it's a no.
That's a great point. Yeah, I feel the same sentiments. I think we, we did the work, we were thoughtful about it. Margaret and her team went through any place that we could find things that could be cut back or reallocated. So that's all baked into this. It's not just, you know, patterns that we need. It was really, really pushing how do we make, is the most efficient budget that we can make it? And it's not just the schools. I would ask someone to think hard about themselves. And if there's some way they will not be impacted by some of the reductions across the town, and I think it would be hard for us to find anyone in town that wouldn't be impacted. And well, the schools definitely will be the bulk of it and the most devastating cuts. It really is, it would be a sad thing for our entire town on Monday when we have to figure out how to manage all of this if that doesn't pass. So I would just encourage everyone to come out and vote. Don't assume anything. Get your neighbors to vote. Find a way in the water open, eight to eight, shameless weather, eight to eight AM on Saturday. If you can't make it then, you can do walk and voting tomorrow or Friday. So, vote.
Thank you.
I think I made this point at some point in one of our dozens of meetings, but I think there are tangible effects of, you know, if this position is reduced, then we don't get the services from that position. And those are very easy effects to track. I mean, as somebody who works in a school, as the teacher, I can tell you, losing 10 staff members in an elementary school or a middle school or a high school is, it's not just the tangibles of the students not getting the specific services from those specific people who were in the schools. It changes the entire tone of the school. The school becomes more chaotic. The school becomes less of a place people want to be. It's less good for, we're looking at the social emotional health of our students. They are, will be less able to take care of your children's social emotional health. We're looking at all the data from the academic progress kids have made. Even if your kid does not have one of the teachers that is reduced, their education will be affected. We will see real data showing our students doing less well if these staff positions are left. And your kids will come home with a very different attitude about school because the school buildings will feel different to them. And that's not a tangible thing that's easy to track, but I can tell you, I've worked in underfunded schools and understaffed schools and fully staffed schools, and there's no comparison.
I'm going to save my six minutes because I think you're, you're the three of you. Yeah, you rather see that you said it all. And I guess I just to add to Ellie, it's like, make sure it's everybody in your house, like go out there. If you have an 18-year-old that's registered, get them there too. It's, it's exciting for them to.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say, I'll put the, everyone has said in the last six, seven, eight months, nine, ten, eleven years. You know, I feel like I got involved in the school, you know, my two passions, I think one was the students, obviously, and then the budget. And this is, this is all for the students in our town. They are the number one priority. Well, any decision, I feel like, I don't know, not, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but every decision that we've made, it's always been, to me, students, I judge. Because we're trying to get these kids back to where they were. They've made a phenomenal amount of progress. We have the data to support that, but we're not, they're not done. We still keep moving forward. And I just cannot stress enough how devastating it will be to, you know, big structure, the structure that has been built. And if we have to tear some levels down, it just, it will be felt from, for every student, I feel, feel that and then staff and morale and administrators. And I just, I really don't want to be here Monday doing that. So please.
Um, yeah, to add on to Jen, my passion for the same as hers, the budget and students, giving my accounting background. You know, we've been doing this for a lot of months, but it's actually been a long years that we've been talking about this and the real impact. And one of the first things that I did when I joined the school committee was to read the financial statements of the town and kind of figure out what, what is happening? Why is, why are certain things happening the way that they're doing? So became really intrigued and just digging in. And I have to credit people who have come before me, AdCom members and school committee members who have done the work and they have provided the history so that I could learn from them. You know, why we are in the position that we're in. And, and so to fast forward a couple of years and Carrie, I credit Carrie for putting me on the Sustainable Budget Task Force. I'm really grateful because we did a lot of great work there and we recognize that we are a lean town. We just run lean. Comparing ourselves to our 19 other benchmark towns, we don't have the same kind of revenue streams and opportunities, just given the way that our town works. But we are on the expense side. We just don't have enough staff. We don't have enough firefighters. We don't have enough staff in schools. It just trickles down through the entire community. Seniors, you know, senior citizens, they've been struggling to get their demand fixed. But, you know, it's, it's, it's just this culmination of, as you guys have mentioned, the East not opening at full capacity. And it's had this triple effect for years and it's been a decade, over a decade of trying to recover. And it will be devastating if we don't get this override passed. The kids are going to struggle. They're struggling from COVID and these effects are long lasting. And we need to make sure that they get their concerns and needs addressed. So.
Might say one more kind of before we close. And not to speak for you, but having two people in the room who actually were in the Hangon schools during the period where the overrides failed in the past and the override that failed by two votes, I think, you know, I can look back and say that it was having, it had a real impact on students at the time. And I cannot imagine students having not due the pandemic and then having that burdened. Because I do think back, and I'm sure you do too, classes were filled to capacity. I had a huge massive group of friends who, parents pulled them from schools and some from private school because of the cuts that were being made. We lost music teachers, we lost our teachers, students, after school activities. It's all the things we're talking about. And we didn't go through a pandemic. So I ask people if they've been in town for a long time, do we really think about that? Do you think how long it took us to recover from that? And then how long it took for the students to recover from it? And if we want to do that right now?
That's a great point. Yeah, I was going to carry that and then thinking what they have just been through COVID.
Yeah, I think there are years. It's. It's a lot to put on students and we saw how impressive these students were the other night, thinking Alex and Tony and others. But how amazing these students are in the thick of it. You know, are we going to ask them to handle what we're choosing to do?
Yeah, and I, you know, I recognize that this is a hard ask for the town because it's a lot of money, you know, at one time. And I think decisions were made in the past to not do overrides or to, to fund up to the whole two and a half percent allowable amount every year. And people made those decisions at the time. So all of this is coming at people at one time. But I still want to, through the Sustainable Budget Task Force work, we have shown that we are still. yeah, through the Sustainable Budget Task Force work, we have shown that we are still a reasonable town as far as taxes go. So yes, it's a big ask, but when you look at other towns or benchmark towns, you still wouldn't be paying, um, a significant amount more than what the other, um, benchmark towns pay.
That is a, a very important part, point, because we do, that is one thing that we have heard often from the opposition, that this is going to push people out of Hangon. But to where? There, everyone has to pay property taxes. There's not anywhere you're going to move that you're going to rent less property taxes today. I mean, we are smack in the middle of where they are.
And frankly, we're talking to, you know, we're, we communicate with school committee members from other towns around us and towns that are not having an override this year will be having one soon.
Yes.
This is something every town is feeling, Hangon is not.
They are not, I mean.
We're not special in this respect. So towns that are not having an override that can squeak through one more year, just like we squeaked through one more year last year. Um, I guarantee you, you will be seeing a lot, a lot more overrides in towns.
We've been talking about this for many, many, many years. And I think it's one of the benefits of why we're able to do it this year is compared to other districts. Because we, and we have the data when we made the decision that we want to have the sustainability report, we want to have the staff staffing audit and all that work, that hard work is done, it was done in a thoughtful way. And I think that we are benefiting from that, that we can bring it to the borders this year.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to Tim's point about how these cuts impact all students. It's not just those at the very bottom who need the most help in general. It also impacts like our most successful students, because if we don't have as many teachers, they won't, we won't have the same flexibility with our courses, there'll be fewer classes. And many of these kids will just be shut out of opportunities that they otherwise would have had if we pass this override. And beyond that, we also have our athletic programs, which should be taking a significant cut. And I, speaking for myself and pretty sure almost all of the eighty percent of students who participate in high school athletics, it's a huge part of our social lives as students, preparing us for working in teams and other groups in the real world. And of course, we're also losing the like mental health support and the extra help for those who are most in need and like, what was the twenty-two percent figure is that, which is specialties in general? There's a massive share of the student population who benefits from these services and it would be a massive loss to them to cut these. And just, again, this does not impact only them. This impacts absolutely everyone. And these cuts are terrible anytime. They could not come at a worse time than after the pandemic, especially for younger students who were denied, like, they're very introduction to education. They need more time to recover and these services are incredibly valuable to them.
Yes, I mean, coming out of the pandemic is, um, it is, I've said it so many times, but I'm not saying it many times. I mean, the COVID quarantine is over, but the kids are not recovered. They have to quarter, uh, or quarter of their educational experience was interrupted. And, um, schools took on a big part of the burden during the pandemic to protect the community. And we need the community to protect the schools and the seniors, right? And I, and I think that this override, again, while, you know, inconvenient timing, it's, we, it have, we have to get this done. I mean, our students and our teachers and our staff as well. I mean, everyone has been through so much over the last three years. And to add this on top of it, to Tim's point, will completely change the character and, um, not, not just the character of our school, but I mean, it will significantly impact the schools. A very wise woman who was in this room posted something on Facebook once, and I can't remember exactly, but it was something along the lines of, you would not, you, don't be surprised at how quickly a good district can become a not good district.
It takes years to build a good school district, but very, very little to break it down.
Yes. Thank you. That's, I'm here for it. Yeah.
Did I say where the wise woman was?
But, um, to that though, I do want to say, say thank you to this administrative leadership team. Um, this was a, a very, very grand, new people in their positions. Um, the fact that we got to a unanimous decision, I would love to, for across all three boards, I would love to say that has to do with all of our charming personalities, but, uh, it is not. It is because you had the data, you articulated the data, you built a budget that not only told the story, but fixes and shows people that it's going to fix the cracks and the problems in our schools. And you did an amazing job putting that together, all three of you. And it is a fact and people have noticed and people have said it. You, you, your presentations have changed hearts and minds throughout this process. So thank you all three of you for what you've done. Um, to students, I mean, you guys have been amazing through this process. Um, you've been amazing through the whole thing. And I already talked about kids being resilient, um, and I think you have just proven it, getting through COVID, getting through this first normal year that we've had a long time, which ended up not being normal, because all of this has been happening. So thank you. Pass it on to your fellow students and to our teachers and the staff. I mean, you, you have been through it. I mean, it has been really incredibly rough, um, three, four years. I mean, the leadership changes were the least, the roughness, right? I mean, and I'm saying something, right? So dealing with the pandemic and change in learning and delivering instructions to students, um, and then going through all this. Um, we are in the home stretch, about seventy-two hours, shocking to think about, but we'll be, polls will be about to close. So bring this home, make it happen. Everybody get out there and vote, please.
We always knew there are two hoops that we had to jump through. And let's be clear that the hoop we still have to jump through is the more challenging hoop. Uh, we should not feel easy breezy because it has time to be.
There's a lot, yes, we got a lot of work to do in the next seventy-two hours. All right, um, I think in the chat, I don't know. Oh, I'm sorry. To Sherry. And she's a comment. Okay. Yes, all right, thank you. Um, yeah, all right, well, we will get out there and make it happen and get this thing done, um, for everybody. Um, for everybody, literally, the entire community, this has to do with the community. I forgot to, that was my, one thing, I'm like, I don't have kids in the schools anymore. This personally means nothing to my family, other than paying more taxes. But I'm very, very willing to do that because this school has meant so much to my family, which is why I'm still doing this work. And because my, my community I want to live in. And I think it's going to be all in the living, so. All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn, I'll make a motion to adjourn. So I will second, all in favor? We are adjourned.